Welcome, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting in Nevada City Council order on Monday, December 11, 2023, six o'clock PM. We get a roll call.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jason, Samson.
Here.
Here.
Sandy, Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. And Steve, any discussion on agenda? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye. You guys are hearing me okay, right?
Yes.
We're here together.
And that is approved, um, with this consent agenda and, um, the, um, practically the motion actually probably could have been the amended agenda. So that we all clear on that, it's amended version in front of you right now. Okay. Want to make sure we're good on that. But that takes us to consent agenda, which does have four E that'll be pulled separately, but consent agenda minus four E. Move to approve.
Second.
Brian, Sandy. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, which that takes us to four E, which is separate consideration for approved pending grand chapter renewal of class C retail alcohol license for Martin, Plank, Davis, P. A. U. C. C. Incorporated, one, 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 five, six, two, effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Move to approve.
Second.
Brian, Steve. Any discussion there?
Wait, what?
About what we've done. So you're basically approving it pending that coming in. Anything else there? None, please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, which takes us into appointments, which this is an exciting time. We have a bunch of folks that have stepped up for different boards and commissions. So first, we have historic preservation commission, and if you're here, um, can you wait so council can, um, meet you and ask questions if they have any, but Katie Wooder and Cisco Martin. So it's here and I do not think Katie. Okay. So thank you both for applying for that. It's an important commission, and there's some goals in the Nevada 2040 plan specifically for the historic preservation commission to work on. So it's good to see that commission be full of members so we can get forum and have some meetings going forward. So. And then Erin, can we approve them all?
Yep.
Okay. So then public arts advisory commission. So this is an exciting one. This is a new commission for us. And to be honest, going through the application, it was pretty amazing, the level of expertise we have in the community to draw upon any arts and all different types of the arts too. And so it was really neat to read through those applications and, um, fill that commission. So you'd see the, the ones that, um, are in front of you for appointments tonight. And so we'll do the same thing. I'll read people off. And if you can, if you're here and wait, so council can meet you through your patients. Dylan Dickinson. Wade Presley. Dan Gannon. Nick Schmidt. Mindy Buck. And Nancy Port. Council, do you have anything for, will we appoint you?
Uh, I had Swan, oh, sorry, yeah.
Uh, but I had, well, all these being appointed at the same time, is there staggered terms as far as how long this term will have been?
There would be. Yeah. So they'll, they'll get staggered and then obviously be eligible for any of the days that they would put through the first one.
I have one other question, but I want to say thanks for all you guys who came. I am the one that's always brown my ass about when he's not coming. I know a lot of people, but I don't know everybody. So I appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
I'm especially excited about the folks.
They know that we have our camera person, where I might want a photo.
I didn't know if he wants.
Yeah, quite as well. Yeah. So if you're one of the appointees, come forward and we'll take a group photo of all our. Swan is in front of the owl.
Yes. Right. All together. Pretend like we're all in the same city. Just a second. Maya. Thank you.
Bye.
Swear that we would be looking for a formal motion to accept the appointments to the historic preservation and public art. The art. Seeing further discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
Is there approves? You're all official. And you'll be getting more from Erin as we, um, well, my Erin or somebody else, one of my people and I don't know who else, but to schedule, um, the next meetings for those. So moving into public forum, which is time to decide for comments in public on, uh, topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No act may be taken. So we do have a few things to do in the public forum. First is swearing in a full-time, please talk to Tyler Coder, and we have see Brandon's here to give us some background about Tyler.
I just wanted to introduce you to Skyler. Well, looks like you've been to Ackerman, that's a ranking, better family, you guys probably know. Uh, Skyler comes with the, your most extreme from Iowa State, so that's a home. Um, Kevin's wife Tanner and three daughters live here in town. They've been here for about a year and a half with a couple more years of work experience here as well. Uh, Skyler's invested in the community. He's a assistant wrestling coach for the high school and hope to continue to do that. Uh, in addition, Doc is kind of home with followers, but his father retired after twenty plus years, but married and counting, but he does still.
Skyler, if you can come up here.
Yeah.
We'll look at that. While you're done with signing, we'll give it to Erin. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Skyler Coder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of the office of police officer.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations, our newest police officer.
Congrats, Skyler.
Next is going to be a presentation for Barb. So, um, at some point, I would like to do some sort of formal perception for the community of Barb for her time of service, but she, with her hard of service, comes directly here from Florida first on Monday. So we were unable to do anything to many, but I don't think we're going to let her out of it. We're going to try to sketch something. But did want to officially acknowledge her service and our appreciation about over eight years ago, I gave Barb a phone call and after she considered serving and thought about it for a few weeks and finally said yes. And I'm very grateful that she's been a really great voice on the council, a great perspective. Brings a lot to our discussions and has really put a lot of time and service in there. And it's been a really strong mayor pro team as well. So backing me up by can't make meetings and things like that. So thank Barb for all of that. So we'll officially present this to you too. I don't know if Marla's about, but. You know, I just have her take a photo after. So I, and thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Can I go to speech, Barb?
Okay. And then we do have some incoming council members too. So, um, we'll go ahead and, um, work on that. So, um, with that, uh, with, oh, and we'll get we'll get a photo with Barb here too, after we do these. Um, so with Barb leaving, being the current mayor pro team, I've asked Sandy Eric to be the new mayor pro team upon Barb's part. So to be appointed mayor pro team when we return. And with that, we will officially swear her in and Henry Corbin in. So our newest council member, Mr. Corbin. And then Jason is online. So we will officially formally swear him in in January. You'll sign and give it to Erin after. So you can both go on from seven. And. Please raise your right hand and, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Sandra Eric.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
For the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Welcome back, Sandy. Congratulations, someone. And Marla's. Bring your camera back in and we'll get Barb back up with her award. My files are. Okay. So we are still in the public forum. Whether anyone here is any to speak in the public forum this evening? Seeing none, we will close the public forum with news to old business A, ordinance number ten forty-nine, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance emitting chapter sixty-three speed regulations of the city code to make necessary changes without the avenue secondary. Move to approve. Second, Steve and Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
Approve, takes us to B, fire alarm and elevator monitoring for Nevada field house. Move to approve that. Brian, Dane. Who's coming up?
Just a couple items in regard to this. This is, uh, necessary for us to get put in place so that we can get our fire alarm and, um, swinver inspections done on the elevator. It's like, um, we are looking at only doing a twelve month agreement for this. And maybe in twelve months, then we'll then decide, you know, what we want to do after that. We want to go on the turn, but we want to put this back out. Um, the elevator company themselves, they monitored the elevator for the first twelve months. That's why we're only doing twelve months. And then, you know, possibly then maybe we look at something, we're going to include others too. Well, um, did, uh, share this with, um, Erin Lynn, and she had a couple remarks that I wanted to make sure you're aware of. Um, one is if there's an auto renewal after a year, we have to give a thirty day notice. So we'll put that in our calendar and make sure we don't miss that as we approach that year. The, uh, other item is, um, Midwest, we're recommending can increase their target is at least once annually. So hopefully as we get through this first year, we'll get through at this cost when we all have an increase. And then there's going to be down in the clause as well. Um, Erin's indicated this is pretty tender language in most all these agreements. So, um, it is comfortable with that. And so I just wanted to make you aware of that though. Um, certain questions I could answer for you.
Thank you. And we did have the motion on the second, I believe, here. Okay. We did seven. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
Approve, takes us to B, approved three lighting on Maple Avenue. Move to approve.
Certainly.
Brian, Sandy.
So we have had a few complaints about our area out there. DOT kind of threw us, we're not putting lights up. We're scrambling to do this. Uh, we did talk to Orion and we couldn't even get a bid from them until, I don't know, mid-January. But that's what Jordan and I are talking to Denbro. We feel solar light we can get installed. That's where we're at.
Are we losing out on line? Do you think, do you mean you think the Denpros, the Mall Park, we had any idea from anybody else that knows maybe what the line maybe a lot of times with power companies are considerably cheaper? Or we think we're good here? I know, I know there's some urgency to that. I get that. So if they come in at four thousand.
I feel that we're going to be moving more towards solar. So with Jordan and I kind of discussed that we would like to try this.
Alliance wouldn't be solar. That's where you're coming?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. Never mind. Did I ask a question? Yeah. Or I just assumed Alliance was going to go up solar lights too, but I guess our power companies, why would you?
The next thing too is the sixth street intersection, we need to address that. Didn't know about the lighting going down S fourteen over the bridge.
That is definitely regarding. Are they going to make lights out there?
Yes.
With seven lights, we're going to have pretty good coverage of that.
Yes, we're hoping. Like, it's a trial, trial error. I mean, we don't know, Jordan, they have them in, um, down in North Fork and Rest and another place, and then they're really starving to get into Iowa. Um, but I think it was last year that they started working in the Iowa area, but they have them in several places.
I was having, I got them with the north side. Small, about five, okay.
We're going to put five down around Maple. And then we're going to put one on the north and south of the bridge. Okay. Put light that up. Just whenever you got permission to, to get on there, do that.
Okay.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved. Which takes us to B, pay request number seventeen for the, the field house and A, LLC, the amount of seven thousand, hundred and two dollars and five cents. Move to approve.
Okay.
Steve, Barb. You tiebreaker. Any discussion there? Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved. Um, which takes us to twenty twenty-two street improvement project, A, approved change order number eight, nine fifty-five thousand, hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Move to approve.
Second.
Brian, Dane. Any discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to B, pay request number ten, and the amount of eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, Sandy, Steve. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That's approved, takes us to C, resolution number thirty-five, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or is it stepping the twenty twenty-two street improvement project absolutely move to approve, Brian, Dane, Barb. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved. Takes us to F, approved pay request number thirty for weight therapy, the improvement base two from Williams Brothers Construction, an amount of eight hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. Move to approve. Steve, Sandy. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to B, approved pay request number fourteen for weight therapy, the facility improvement base four from on track construction, LLC, in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty. Move to approve. Second, Brian, Barb. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved. Um, which takes us to H, AK Systems LLC, A, resolution number thirty-six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution approving the sale of one of the AK Systems LLC. Move to approve. Second, Dane, Sandy. Seeing no discussion, council please vote.
Aye.
And it's approved, takes us to B, resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution approving amended development of A, AK Systems LLC. Move to approve. Second, Brian, Steve. So we're also just dates.
Uh, it's the dates. We added the fifty thousand non-refundable and they have two months to close on the property. So February thirteenth is when they are supposed to close on the property and we provide the remaining amount of money. And then June one is the date where they are supposed to break ground and actually start building. And if they do not do that by that day, we have an option to buy back the language for seventy-five percent of the house.
So I, and you know, as I said, in the acquisition price, I think you go back to whether you're, you know, is that more or less?
Same.
Same, you know, okay. I just keep this process out.
Yeah, before, before I don't think we, yeah, before I don't think we actually have the amount in there, you know, um, we just have the amount.
Okay, all right.
It was in the original purchase agreement and then they never signed.
That was like three thousand.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was always that fifteen thousand nature.
Right. Okay.
Moving on. Seeing none, council please vote.
Aye.
That is approved, takes us to new business, A, resolution number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, resolution thousand, sixty payout upon retirement. Okay. Barb and Steve, this button.
Uh, not really in favor of this, because the way it's written. I think that is honestly far too generous. I think our current policy is probably where it needs to be. So I don't know that I don't think it's for this the way it is. I think the timing is maybe unfortunate, although it's from the union negotiations. We don't want to be major I know pieces of our employee compensation provider is pretty, pretty negative on it.
Any discussion?
It, it feels to me like we're running this through first to do it. I don't think it's by feeling that it's all agreed.
Well, this is something that Karen and I have been working on. Karen's been working on it for the last couple of years and we just got to it, uh, for this council meeting. And it is that timing, because it does look like we're doing it for one person, but, uh, really we are. I wouldn't say necessarily rewarding, but we are kind of rewarding the people who do come to work day in, day out and do not use, use up their sick leave on a regular basis. Um, and that's something that, uh, we appreciate because they give it their all the time and do not do not purposely miss work. And so.
I appreciate that. I appreciate your contribution, but when people are sick, it's been all.
I don't disagree with that.
If you're really healthy, oh, that's great. Um, you know, it's there's a payoff for that already. I don't know that I want to do any more to encourage people to come to work when they're sick. Considering what I went through a couple of years ago.
And I, I don't disagree with you. Um, I guess what I was getting at is there are some people that abuse sick leave and they're not necessarily sick for that. And, um, that is a little bit different, but at the same time, I do agree with you that I don't want people coming to work when they're sick. Cause I don't want it to affect them. They're working and cause a big issue.
Well, I also think if moving forward, if we do decide to do something. I don't want people not, I don't want you to come to work thinking that it's a savings account either. The head, you know. As long as they don't burn up five thousand dollars worth of gas. I mean, if they're sick, they need to stay home. And I'm not saying that people who come to work sick, but you know as well as I do, people come to work sick when they shouldn't. Sick days are for sick days. I don't know. There are a lot of things you could, I think, in my opinion, should do different, but that's a whole other fisk down the road. But yeah, the timing is, is, it stinks. I'm a little taken back that it got sprung on us right now, you know, because I think everyone in the room knows it probably been made or been done months ago, uh, right now. I'm not saying that maybe somebody doesn't deserve something. I don't think today's the time in life. You know, I think it sets us up bad for union negotiations. Cause I'll tell you right now, if I'm in a union negotiator, I'm looking at this right here that we decided to nice. Hey, I want it in, in contract. Do we want to do that? That's me. I don't think we should change anything till the negotiating is over. You know, I think it's a bad precedent that we're going to just do something. Hey, let's not change the handbook. Let's wait to do that, but let's go ahead and do it right now anyway.
I'm also interested in any kind of comparative information. Like, long along Dr. Lord, who's the.
Now, I think there's a couple of good examples, the D O P, I think, one of them.
A little bit of Google research I did, I S U and D O Z both offer two thousand. It's under a few cities around Iowa that fill two thousand. I didn't see anybody at this particular level that's been close there.
I don't care. I did research and gave you a memo. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add.
But yeah, I gave them. See for you. And it's not for the union contract. It's for the handbook. And like I said in the, the memo. I've been working on updating the whole entire handbook because it hasn't been updated totally revamped and exposed that I defined the last one. And so I've been going through doing any other people's, um, handbooks and just looking at everything. It takes a lot of time and, um, what it paid me so long. And finally had just given out the, for the union here for better review too. But this was one of the things that we were really behind a ball of everybody else. The only reason is the handbook, not the union. It, it was the handbook.
And so Karen, I think Steve's question is what some of the, and I think what some of the comparable worthy you used in the, in the research.
Um, the fight that, well, the. Um, the site that, well, the insurance is really what a lot of them do. And depending on the years of service of they'll give, they'll let you have insurance for a year or if you've been here fifteen years or twenty years, they'll increase that a little bit. So that's really what a lot of them do. A lot of them do nothing too. So it, it goes both ways.
I think we need to update handbook. We need to update handbook, but I don't think we need to do it please today or please tomorrow. Please after we negotiate, let's, let's do it. Yeah. That's my opinion. I mean, it says the writing of the letter or in the memo we got in the council that hey, we don't want to change the handbook, but we want to do this right now. Is that really the way to do it or do we do the whole handbook? I get it at six times. I update my handbook too. The day does take a while, like compared to, I don't know what mine's gonna come out this weekend, but you know, I don't know. We're struggling with it.
I'm on the same page as the rest of them. Uh, to me fifteen hundred dollars is too much. It's for sick time. If you're there or if you're sick, you shouldn't be coming to work. And that's what sick days are for. Vacation and personal days, that's what you should get paid when you retire. My opinion, I've seen it be abused. I've had people use up every single last hour of their, uh, sick time before we're leaving. But that's few and far between.
And the discussion? Do you know, have we vote?
Nay.
Resolution has failed. So that moves it to B, resolution number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or is it an amendment and approving the appendix of the code? Move to approve. Second, Steve? I'm hoping that this button, you know, Brian had some.
Well, it's, it's on the right away fee. Um, Brian, we talked about Andy a little bit before, and the mayor. There's a part where you have a, we have, we changed it from twenty dollars to a thousand dollar deposit. But there's a five hundred dollar non-refundable part of that, which I can get from what Ryan said, and correct me if you're wrong. Okay, well, Ryan, I'll speak for Ryan. Is this what he said?
I think confirm it.
Yeah, yes. The, the problem they're having is people are working in the right of way and then they walk away and they're settling and there's other things that don't get finished. Well, we can't hold them accountable. So that's why he wants to update the deposit. Am I correct there, Mayor? Right. My problem is, and I think Andy brought up is, you know, the years ago, and maybe I was the only one here and Andy won me passed. We changed it that the contractor kept a million dollars of insurance to work in the right of way. Um, so we're already holding them accountable that they have insurance. I'm, I'm personally okay with a thousand dollar deposit, but the five hundred dollars comes out of the homeowner's pot. So it's a, it's non-refundable that the homeowner would have to pay. That's the only problem I have is non-refundable. I can't wrap my head around it. Ryan couldn't give me a good answer why we have a non-refundable part. It just seems like it's another fee, basically. So Andy's gonna get up and talk. That's fine, but that's the problem I have. I have to brought it up and I honestly forgot about the million dollar policy that we passed years ago. Andy helped remind me of that. So I think, I think the contractor is accountable for insurance. So he's already got to prove that. He's already got to pull a permit. If we want to put a deposit on it, I'm okay with that, but I can't, I don't understand the non-refundable part. The deposit could be the same thing. It's like, hey, Jordan, so you're done and it passes what Ryan says is good. You're not getting your deposit back. And I think that that would help accountability. That's my opinion. I'm done. Let's see what Andy, Andy can. Well, I'll do something I wouldn't normally do. We'll defend Ryan personally with cash deposit down. It makes it a lot easier to sue somebody for insurance. I get that. I'm gonna make it a lot easier to hold them accountable out of the but I know it can blow a little bit. Uh, any idea what we charge? The city has to change a curb box.
That's a shame. Oh, really?
Probably, okay. A five hundred thousand non-refundable would make even money for the city for, for somebody to say, you know what? Just do it because if I'm gonna change the curb box or somebody pull a permit, pay the right of way fee, leave five hundred dollars on the table, do the work by the curb box, uh, the city can, the city can do a lot more of their own work and that's not, right? It's, but it's, I mean, it's just the numbers. Look at the nuts and bolts of it. Um, the city instituted a, a self pump program because they want homeowners to discharge, to storm rather than sanitary. So a bunch of years ago, we put a match and fun together. So the city matches up seven hundred dollars to encourage people to, to storm and it's been fifteen years of put in and no money has been added. So the coolest time, seven hundred dollars was about half of a project to encourage people not to illegally dump into sanitary or your paintings treated and overloading them to his treatment plan. Uh, we haven't updated the amount of city matches and five hundred dollars off the top puts a dent in that anyway. I mean, some of this you want to encourage homeowners to do the work. You want them to have working curb boxes. You want them to have the old self pumps. Um, as a contractor, it's a wash for me. I'm not paying the five hundred dollars. It's a line item. I figured I'd come here and speak. So when I'm explaining to some of my older residents why they're giving me five hundred dollars and say, well, oh, it says something about it. Talk to your councilman. I, I get why Ryan wants to. It makes it a lot easier to hold the contractor accountable. I guess we pay a deposit, pay a deposit, but, uh, a condition of holding a state master license in any of the trades is a million dollar bond. So the purpose at first was to make sure wildcatters weren't running around digging holes in the right of way. If, if they're in the right of way, they pulled a permit, they have a million dollars liability, generally you can find them. If, if we're having problems with contractors after that, probably smash these, take them to make sure the contractors aren't there and it's thousand dollars apparently. If they do something that's mistaken, thousand dollars is a basic thing.
When, do you think just go with a five hundred dollar deposit, they call it good or?
What? I'm not favorizing any of the speed. One of the favorite meetings I've ever gone to, Brian started the meeting saying, there's no reason I would have a building in city limits. Raising fees doesn't make that better. It doesn't make it more attractive to, to try to run an operation in city limit. If we're looking at have a, you know, fifty percent to a hundred percent of doubling our rate of fees tonight on some of this. Uh, and I don't know where to account for five hundred dollars lost or digging a hole that you want people to dig, but do whatever you want. I just, does it with my customers? I just heard that. And I know Andy does, doesn't agree with me on this point, but I think I don't have a problem with the deposit. What I have a problem with is the non-refundable part of it. I don't understand what the non-refundable part is. So they put in a deposit, Andy gets done with it. Then he gets his money back when Ryan says it's good. And when Ryan goes out and says it's good, then there's a problem. Then that's accountability at the city level, not the contractor's level. Um, I don't quite understand what the five hundred dollar non-refundable part would, would prove other than it costs the taxpayer five hundred dollars more to do, like he said, something we encouraged. You know, otherwise they're just gonna have, put their self pump in and run a pipe over and help it in their floor drain in their basement. There's, which they can do without us getting in trouble until we inspect our house and they want to sell. And other than that, make a dump in the sanitary and we get paid to treat it for the next twenty years until they want to sell their house and it's not a good deal.
I wanted to see, Jordan, is there any background on the, or the non-refundable fee?
Uh, really some of it came from issues that we've had in the past. One of them was the, I want to say it was wind stream that was pulling a fiber or something and we never were able to get ahold of them and we had, we had to get city staff going there until, uh, it was during our streets project and they left that, it was probably a five foot hole that they left unattended for three to four months. Um, and finally what we just did is we went and we, we filled it ourselves and we filled the company for it. And I believe we did end up getting paid for the services rendered there, but uh, I think that's where mainly stems for it.
But a deposit, that'd be out of the bottom, care of that, so.
Yeah, so I mean, if.
There's no reason to keep five hundred dollars of Sandy's money or Andy's money or however he wants to do it. He's doing a project with Sandy. If it's done correctly, done right, then they ought to get the deposit. And also that you guys have franchise agreements with the utility companies. I mean, you, you have recourse separate from this. That's kind of what it comes down to is there's two different categories of work. You have big companies and five hundred dollars isn't going to do anything for a big project, but you have franchise agreements in place with them already. But five hundred dollars is gonna be, it'll be substantial for small projects.
So, I mean, you, you can make the recommendation that we adjust this and do it odds of not non-refundable.
And the other piece that's, you Brown, we're thinking about that, you presented a twenty dollar permit charge. So you'd want to consider what part will be the permit fee for the work that Ryan has to oversee it?
Yeah, because wasn't that changed too? I don't have.
It's crossed out. So the permit was twenty and then it says a thousand deposit with five hundred refundable, which makes the permit then five hundred basically. So that, that's kind of a jump. It's twenty to five hundred. So, you know, you can think about it.
Well, the one under, that's the contractor has to buy that every year.
Yeah, the one under it's the twenty dollar.
Right.
So we, we blocked the.
Yeah.
Collected.
So you can leave it twenty dollars. You can figure out if that needs to be bumped, but that's a piece of the map.
I mean, we'll need to.
Because he took the, he took the permit fee away.
Right.
He just made it a pop. Five hundred, well, five hundred can accept it for a minute, I think.
Yeah, but basically that's, you've made it a five hundred dollar permit away.
So you could do like a fifty dollar fee.
So Karen, can we do an amendment to this now or do we need to bring it back?
You can do an amendment to this now.
We're gonna change it? No, that's okay. So I don't know what, what's everyone else's opinion to have a permit, but then have a father refundable.
I think have a small permit amount and then have.
For Ryan, you oversee it. I think you'd have a permit. Which you already have.
But then, but it's, it's crossed out.
Yeah.
Well, right, but I mean, your standard plumbing permit is, Karen, is it like thirty-seven plus two for fixture, whatever, then there's a base plus for a fixture.
Yeah, it's, it's on your green card in the office right now. I, I have one on my clipboard right here.
Thirty-five plus two dollars per.
Well, I, I can't remember what the base permit is, but yeah, it falls under.
Right.
Okay, thirty-five plus fixture.
Yeah.
There would be no fixture or anything on, on right of way. Well, it's, it's thirty-seven minimum. I think it's a one fixture minimum. There's the.
I, I think it's, I think it's two separate things that we're talking about. One's plumbing and one's right of way. So.
There, yeah, but they're talking about a right of way permit. I mean, if you're doing work, it's still gonna fall under one of the trades. Right? I mean, you'd have a construction permit. You either have a construction permit, electrical permit, plumbing permit, probably not much of a mechanical permit, but I mean, I think anybody that's doing inspected work already has the permit application upfront for whatever they be doing out there. Then sidewalks, driveways, under construction remodel, you know, self pump, water mains, sewer, under plumbing permit, lighting, under electrical. It's, I, I think there's a line item on every one of the permit applications.
Yeah, there is. New and those are real.
And that could be why they cross the twenty dollar down. Forget what. So can I, can I, can I amend my motion? I made the motion, right? Right?
Hold on. Yep, you did. And then Steve seconded him.
So I would amend my motion, saying number five, two, section two, number five, to a one thousand dollar deposit refundable on completed inspection. That sound appropriate? That covered?
You still want.
Basically you're strapping the five hundred dollars off the current. Right.
Yeah.
But in the thousand dollars full refunded after Ryan inspects it and it's complete.
Yep.
I know I just said it like three different ways.
I think we get.
Do you still need to have a permit? The year did we just?
I think, I think Andy's argument's valid that you're gonna have to pull a permit for anything you're gonna do in right of.
We already paid a permit up above for.
Yeah, plumbing, mechanical, a, a alliance gonna bore, that'd be an electrical commercial permit. Um, or residential, there's mechanical up there. I don't know what you would do in the right of way that we don't have a permit for already.
Just want me, there's more oversight time involved in overseeing and being on the reading.
Be the same with it. I mean, if people got to walk and inspect your plumbing.
Yeah, but so the thing though is your, your plumbing, commercial, remodel, addition, renew, all of that is what captures inside. You're still gonna have to get an excavation permit, which is, that's basically what this is, a right of way excavation permit, permit. So that, that's the difference between the, your plumbing because.
Plumbing has new service though also as a line item. Plumbing, vertical, new remodel or addition.
But it's, yeah, I, to me they're a little bit separate, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll go the direction that the council wants to, wants to go.
I think the permits cover it, in my opinion, from looking at it right here again, but I, I'll go whatever on that.
In the code? I'm just, if it's calling, if the code section calls it a right of way excavation permit, I want to make sure we've got that covered, but I can't.
This one, I would be like inclined to have Ryan here to do this for straight.
Yeah, I.
Spend a little more time.
My suggestion would be to table.
Okay, I would drop my motion and handle it. I, I think Andy's right. We need a little more background. Eric can check the code, what it says.
You can get Ryan.
I don't think this is time sensitive. We have to do it for that one thing. I just called.
So we'll consider that. No vote, no act and move to report.
All right. Um, aside from what is in my report, today I met with four IDAG classes at the high school and talked with them about city government and all of the positions that are held at the city level. Uh, that was really fun to do. Um, it was about a three hour meeting that I, uh, that I discussed everything with. And also talked about different projects and stuff that we're, we're doing and accomplishing as well as the twenty forty plan that we're, we're working through as well. Uh, met with MetroNet last week, talked to them about our service as well as extending and the, and furthering the service that they have in the community to the Southwoods, fourth and other. Um, so they're supposed to be getting back with, with me on that. Uh, met with our leadership committee that deals with the leadership and the beta that we have and, um, kind of set up a little bit the dates more firm, um, as well as figuring out the city side of things for that. Um, had a streets improvement meeting with Brandon, Holly, as well as Larry was there also. And then we had our first tree meeting, our tree committee meeting as well. That was pretty exciting and um, Marlis and I have some things that we need to accomplish with that and then we'll take it back to the committee and bring it to the full council so we can move forward on that and not pertains to right of laws as well. Other than that, um, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, moving on for report. For me, um, one, we did have a really nice retirement reception for Director Martinez and I got to thank him for his many years of service and all that he's done for the city of the government and I did a good work. So I want to thank you again, right? Here tonight for all of your service. Um, also Christmas on Main went well and that was, uh, fun to be part of. I would just say Marlis, next year the wind a little bit less if you could.
Yeah.
No, it was, it was really nice. And it was nice to see all of our businesses participate in a bunch of town and otherwise just had a meeting earlier with Joe and the railroad or about the railroad with D O P and stuff. And so they're looking at the crossing on Maple and how to design that with the future upgrade to Maple. Now, any questions for me? I'm going to go back. Right?
Just real quick, uh, the fire department, we've been working with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. And Iowa is the first state to adopt reimbursement for the thermal fuels for people that have. So that's a significant, you know, state of Iowa that you'll see other states follow that. Uh, we anticipate that we can convince the federal side of Medicare to follow suit that we could, uh, reduce fire deaths about twelve percent in the country. So it's kind of need the uh small community that's leading the charge, but uh, the state's been really good to work with.
And you want to recognize Ray for that. It was, um, after those health fires, he brought it to my attention and he talked about folks in the state. Talked to former, um, it was, let's see, Verma, you know, out from DC and folks that have been in the last administration. But come up with the current administration and has really been pushing on it. And I got a, a, a notice from the state paying through Medicaid for the, it's in right of way. I'm like, this is what Ray's doing because he's really been like a bulldog on this issue. So good job, Ray.
Well, the biggest thing that Street's been doing is uh, trying to get these lights moved out on Maple. So and we're getting that done. We're hoping that it's not gonna be the eight, eight week leeway or anything, but it's kind of where we're at with that. I ordered the signs for stop me for the twenty-five mile an hour time. So when the three, we'll have those before. And uh, just been working with the budget. The question.
Tim, Miranda?
I don't have anything outside of the report and what we've just gotten done unless anybody had any questions.
I actually don't have much beyond my report. Uh, there has been a complaint of speed and some, so I'll just, that's fourteen I've left in. I had talked to you guys previously about, we have a message board, so we have that out. Uh, once we get that back, we'll be able to cover it down. We'll have it.
Karen?
I don't have anything on my report. I will remind you that once the amount of things that's. We don't have any problems or no need to respond. It's only a communication from me and the press. We'll go to you. We are reviewing the final draft and audit, so it's becoming.
Anything to get some questions?
Good to.
Counsel, anything else before we adjourn?
You didn't ask, we didn't ask before.
Andy, counsel report.
Just wanted to thank Camelot Theater Foundation for a strong partnership we had last weekend. Good show and everyone else there, I think you had a great time. Thank you, Camelot Theater Foundation. Now hopefully I'll buy a ticket for the beach bash.
Oh, I have a question.
Not when we talk about. Yeah, I, I spent some time with our Boy Scouts groups a week ago. It was explaining kind of like what Jordan said he did at Hijack, what we do. How city government kind of works, you know, the different aspects, other things that are going on. Asked for questions, the end, they all know my shoe size of all I am. How much I weigh. Tell them they could ask anything and I answered. It was, it was a good time. The boys and girls and Boy Scouts in our town were very inquisitive about their partners. That was a fun time.
I want to take a moment and thank Barb for her time on the council. You've been a, a hell of a pillar for us to lean on. I have no idea how Henry's going to follow in your footsteps because I don't think he's as detail oriented as you are, but we'll see, we'll see. Um, I am very sorry I couldn't be there to see you off, but I'm sure we'll talk in the future. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Pressure, Henry.
Second.
Brian, Sandy, all votes in favor?
I'm gonna save it for Barb.
Yeah, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.